I would invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in the room in silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now it's time for the Citizens Forum, a time for citizens to speak before the Commission on any topic that is not on the official agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we move on to the Moods and Proclamations.
Item 4.1, the day of January 18th, 2009, as Martin Luther King Jr.'s commemoration Day in the city of Salina, Val Crable, Committee Chair, will read the proclamation.
Mr. Crable was not able to be with us today. My name is Lisa Upshaw. I'm the curator at the Smoky Hill Museum, so I will be reading the proclamation in his place. Honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whereas the 15th day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. King stood before all the world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and an example of love and brotherhood, and whereas the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all God's children, so now, therefore, I, John K. Benear II, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Sunday, January 18th, 2009, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s commemoration day, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 12th day of January, 2009.
Thank you. Are there any special events planned?
We actually have a very full weekend planned of events, starting with Saturday, January 17th. We have a choreography session at 10 o'clock in the morning at St. John's Baptist Church, and that's for kids to learn the dance steps for "Happy Birthday, Dr. King." Some of you may remember when Stevie Wonder did that song. And then there's a dance party at 2 o'clock in the afternoon at the church, and everyone's invited. There's refreshments. And then Saturday evening at 7 o'clock, there's a community potluck dinner, and we'd certainly encourage everybody to come out, bring a dish. And we'll also be collecting canned food items for a food drive that will benefit the Emergency Aid Food Bank. And we're doing that in conjunction with the Volunteer Connection this year, a service project that they are heading up. And then on Sunday, January 18th, at 3:30, is our interface celebration service, and there's all kinds of great music going on, guest speakers, and also the food drive will be going on during that service as well. And then Monday, January 19th, the holiday concludes with a 12 noon service at St. John's Baptist. So if you guys have any questions, give us a call down at the museum or Arts and Humanities. I have buttons for everybody.
Thank you. Now I have a signed copy of the proclamation for you also. We'll move on to the public hearings and item scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, public hearing to consider a petition filed by Ryan's Mortuary requesting the vacation of the remaining portion of Claflin Avenue east of Ohio Street. Sub-Item 5.1A, first reading ordinance number 0910482.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In 1994, the City Commission received a petition from multiple landowners who own land east of Ohio Street requesting that Claflin Avenue be eliminated from Ohio Street East all the way over to Austin Circle. That was ultimately approved in April of 1994, but the owners closest to Ohio, the Lundberg Trust, and at the time, the Central Kansas ENT Associates, asked that a 150-foot length of Claflin east of Ohio be retained to preserve future access options. The Lundberg Trust property has now been purchased, and those owners presented a replat to you in November, which eliminated the south remaining half or piece of Claflin Avenue, and this is filed as a follow-up item by Ryan's Mortuary, who owns the land north of Claflin Avenue. What they wish to do is eliminate the public street right-of-way and substitute a private shared driveway in its place, and so the final elimination of all public ownership is needed to allow that to proceed. There are public utilities within that existing area, so we're recommending that the right-of-way be vacated, but a utility easement retained in its place. And this will go back in proportion at which it was dedicated, which means that 37 feet will go back to Ryan's Mortuary. With that, I'd be open to any questions that you have, but staff's recommendation would be to approve the vacation, eliminating the rest of the right-of-way on first reading.
This time I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this petition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I'd move that we approve on first reading ordinance number 09-10482, vacating the remaining right-of-way for Claflin Avenue east of Ohio Street, but retaining the utility easement within the vacation area.
It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance number 0910482. Are those in favor, sitting five the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 5th, 2009. Item 6.2, approve addenda number 1 to the Comprehensive Plan Update Contract for Services with Gold Evans Associates. Item 6.3, resolution number 096587, amending the city of Salina Shared Vision Statement and Strategic Plan. Item 6.4, resolution number 096588, authorize renewal agreements to provide administrative services for a self-funded health benefit plan and individual aggregate stop loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas. Item 6.5, resolution number 096589, authorizing the city manager to sign renewal confirmation number 1, Section 6 with Delta Dental of Kansas Incorporated for dental care benefits.
Are there any items that the Commission would like approved from the consent agenda? If not, are we accepting the motion?
I've already moved that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are those in favor, sitting five the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Development.
Item 7.1, accept the offered easement dedication, authorize the mayor to sign the Sonic Edition replat.
Mr. Andrew.
We've had this in front of you for this particular property a couple times, to look at the existing sewer in the alley and vacation of that alley, and as a final piece of the puzzle, the owners from Texas, the D.L. Rogers Corporation, want to repackage this property into one platted lot. It's not something that is required by any of the previous actions, but it's something that they wish to do, and our role as a city staff is just to look to see that they reflected all the changes, the easement dedications, the alley vacation that had occurred before, and that the drawing they prepared would meet all requirements for recording, and it does. So we think it's in order for your action today. All it does really is you're accepting the 20-foot utility easement that is for the 12-inch public sewer line that bisects the property, and so we think this is in order for your action today.
Questions of staff? Thank you. Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor Benear, I move that we accept application P08-10/10A, second of the offered easement dedication and Sonic Edition.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the offered easement dedication and authorize the mayor to sign the Sonic Edition replat, which is application P0810-10A. Are those in favor, sitting five the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Administration.
Item 8.1, approval of supplemental engineering agreement number 5.1 for the North Broadway Corridor project.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a supplemental agreement for North Broadway. I did include a lot of background in there for your information. It's been a long project, it's with a lot of history, and it did recently complete construction in November of this past couple months ago. And in that process, we hired BWR to do the construction inspection for us, and KDOT requires inspection to their standards and with a three-way contract with them, so we, the city participated with that, hired BWR for an amount not to exceed $373,000, $980,000, approximately $374,000. That was estimated using about 200 working days, which was the contract construction guidelines for basically for how long that project was supposed to take. It was the, last year it began in February of '07, and it was the May of '07 floods, which was a major problem for weather, and that project got delayed for those reasons, as well as it was a very wet year, and stretched into last winter, and then again, it was a fairly wet winter, so there wasn't a lot of work that could be done. So bottom line is, BWR had to expend more resources to inspect the project. KDOT has a policy where they give the contractor a recovery day when they have a rain event or some kind of a weather event. So sometimes the contractors can actually perform work on those days, so they are able to get some work done, but it requires more inspection. And the city staff did receive their letter in June of this year, asking for additional funds. They'd reached their cap, and the city asked for a little more backup on some of those days, because it was a sizable amount, and the project was not yet complete as well, so we wanted to make sure we had everything covered. And BWR felt comfortable in October, giving us the final count, number of days, project ended, and KDOT and city staff confirmed the amount of days that BWR was requesting. So to help cut costs, BWR did not do full inspection on the days where there wasn't any work going on. They had to still check traffic control, they still have to keep notes, but they did their best to try to standard the cap, but they did have a 70% overrun, which is the amount that we're requesting today, except it was 81% overrun on days. So we felt like it was a fair request, it's not something that the city would like to have in the future. We feel like we can do something on the proactive side. We have three qualified KDOT inspectors now to help with projects and traffic control and things, to use them more as a partner, instead of having them full-time inspections. So we think in the future, we will be able to keep inspection costs that we have to pay down for that reason. This was, we were short-staffed during the time they were doing this inspection, so we didn't have a lot of choice. But I guess just looking in the future, I think we can do a better job of either hitting this number, if they start running out of days, or if there's a reason to have an overrun, then we can supplement with our own staff or make sure we, I mean, when we have a weather event year, a big year on weather, that's just the way it's going to have to be, and we can help them in that regard. So that's all I can say. Glenn is here today to answer any specific questions, if you have any specific questions for this. Otherwise, we request this to be approved.
Questions of staff? Are we comfortable that the inspection services were performed, the material was tested, and that we aren't going to have any problems in the very near future with any of the construction along North Broadway? And maybe that's a question for the city manager. I don't know if you were here long enough to...
I arrived here at the time, right after they had some, a big punch list and a walkthrough on the project to try to address some of the drainage problems and the concrete issues, and that punch list has been completed to the best that the contractor could complete. It has been completed. The question on whether they've addressed everything, I believe they have, Mike, that's really, Mike's helped me with this quite a bit, too.
Yeah, we believe that they have, and that this should not be a major issue for us.
My question was the same as Mayor Benear's. When you say completed everything, and it should not be an issue for us, what's completed? On that punch list, I mean, I've been personally aware of some workmanship that was just, in my uneducated opinion, unacceptable, and I'm not sure if necessary. I mean, with all this inspection time, you would have thought none of that stuff would have been present, but it was. And so when we talk about this being completed and things being taken care of, you know, when a curb juts out, has that been taken care of? I don't think that's been taken care of. When concrete's worn too thin, did we go back and tear that out, or how was it taken care of?
Dan, maybe if I just give that a shot.
Okay.
We would be the first to admit is that the quality of the project, the workmanship, was a problem. And there were a number of locations throughout the project, particularly the concrete work, that needed to be replaced and fixed. We walked the project one afternoon. We had somewhere in the neighborhood of 75 to 80 items on a punch list that were not correct, that needed to be replaced and fixed. I'm familiar with the specific situation you're talking about, where the curb kind of does kind of an S-turn a little bit there. The city made it very clear to the parties that we wanted to have these things addressed. Dan has worked with his engineering staff to be able to go back and to see that those changes that were on the punch list were corrected to the city's satisfaction. But there were anywhere from 75 to 80 different locations where the workmanship or the quality of the job was not to our standards. Those have been addressed and have been corrected, and that, I think that's what Dan is referring to right now. In addition to that, I think Dan has brought up the point that in the future on these projects is that we want to take a little different course, is that we want to be taking a little bit more of an active participative role in the inspection of these projects, as opposed to maybe contracting those things out. We feel that we have a quality staff that is now trained in these areas, and that we could be able to do some of these inspections ourselves, to be able to ensure the quality that we're looking for, and be able to do it at a reduced cost. So we'd be the first to admit that there were problems on this project. There's a lot of things that turned up on that list that probably shouldn't have, that should have been stopped or should have been corrected. We've gone back now from the punch list and made those improvements to it, and to the best of our abilities, that we've been able to try to address that to be able to move on to the next step. This is the final step in that process, to be able to make payment for the amount of time that BWR has put in to be able to do the inspection of that particular project.
Do we have assurances going forward from BWR? I mean, what statements were made from their end to say, yeah, we overlooked these 80 different things, and going forward, we would like to work with the city again?
That gets to my question also. Do they inspect to a different standard than the city does? Or if we're paying for inspections, why are there 75 or 80 items on a punch list? I mean, they had the shop drawings and nothing changed. What would they expect inspecting to? Well, I mean, that's a question that I think the city staff had from the get-go with this, and that's why you had people on that inspection project that are not normally inspecting, and that we were concerned with the quality of the different elements of the project, particularly the concrete work that was done there, and that, so we made an effort to try to identify those things. I don't know if we've actually sat down and discussed some of those issues with BWR as far as is it their quality of inspection work? I don't know.
Mike, if I'm not mistaken, you mentioned, obviously, the involvement of the Kansas Department of Transportation, and this is a three-way engineering agreement, correct?
Correct.
One of the things we learned on a past larger project that also would be a factor in this is that, and I don't mean to lick a gift horse in the mouth, but when we're dealing with KDOT, because KDOT funds are involved, when it comes to the finish work of these projects, they have a completely different standard than our standard, and we learned on a painful way, and by the time we learned that, this project was well underway. And so basically, when we're talking about a punch list, we had a list of approximately 80 items where we felt it didn't meet the standard that we would expect for that type of project. But when you bring KDOT into that, they're more focused on functionality and a little less focused on maybe a little wave in the curb or some concrete finish issues, things that to us seem to be unacceptable. So part of that also is trying, in this particular project, is trying to balance out the standard that they have for finish work that really doesn't quite meet our finish standard, and try to work through this and find that common ground, and be as satisfied as we possibly can. One of the things we have kind of decided is that whenever we get the opportunity to utilize KDOT funding for a project and do that without having a three-way agreement, we are, obviously, we want to do that, because I think we've learned a little bit of a lesson with regards to how they look at their projects today. The reason is, is because we're focusing on interstate projects and other highway projects, and they just simply don't have as a, I guess, a primary emphasis, that level of finish work that we'd like to have. So little puddles, little concrete deficiencies, things like that, just aren't important to them. So it's not necessarily an issue in this case, talking about with BWR and inspection, it's also an issue just simply what the standard is, what is written to, and what we went into this with, and then probably later on, our folks figured out that's really not the standard that we want, we need a higher standard for the future, and that's really what we're looking at here. It's a big part of this.
Yeah, just to reiterate that, too, is it's very true. What Jason said there is that KDOT looks at it from the standpoint that we learned, is it safe and does it function? Their emphasis is not on the aesthetics. It's just basically, is it safe and does it function and does it do what it was designed to do? That was a very difficult project in some respects there, too, because it's very flat, and that because it was so flat, it was very difficult to be able to put enough slope on the concrete gutter to be able to get it to drain as well as it would in a location where there was a little more slope. So what you have is, you had a lot more locations, we had a lot of these little puddles, because it was very difficult to be able to get the water to be able to drain. So there was a lot more of those than normal on a project.
Still, you can pour a two-and-a-half inch portion of a sidewalk, and it will function for some time, but you know it's not going to perform long-term like a four-inch pour would do. And those are the types of things that I take exception to. My last question on this is, are taxpayers paying for anything that had to be inspected twice on this list? Did we go back on that punch list, and then are we getting charged twice then for them to come back through and have to go through that inspection after they fixed mistakes?
I don't know. I probably need to go back and look at that, because you've brought up a lot of good points, and I mean, there's no reason to. I hear you, and I think Glenn's heard it, and I think it needs to be heard, and it was unacceptable. That's all there was to it. I was hired, and my hope is we can do something in the future, and you, everybody has raised the bar, I think. Maybe the bar was pretty low to begin with, but they've raised the bar. We're looking for a lot more things than we ever were. All of our inspection guys are pretty excited about things, more than they maybe were in the past, and we've hired a couple new staff people who have some concrete and asphalt experience. So my only thoughts today for you all is, you can do what you want with this, and we can go back and get whatever's necessary for you, but in the future, we're going to try and do a better job.
I mean, thanks to BWR. We do have a representative here in Glen Conac that might be able to answer more specifically the building-type questions.
I'm kind of troubled with the way I'm reading the overall ratios of the money in this whole project. Am I reading this correctly, that the contractor got $2,001,48, KDOT granted us $800,000 toward that, but we're now saying that the total design and construction is $776,000, virtually the same as the KDOT grant? And to me, that's about 35%, or more than 35% of the construction cost. That seems unusually high. Am I, are we going to be able to not put that much money in the paperwork behind a project in the future and get more money into the substance of what's actually built?
It's a good point, yeah. I mean, that's the supplemental agreement, is $776,000, that's what the cost is going to be.
That is, I am right. That's over 35% of the cost of the construction itself.
It is. I mean, design usually is 10 to 15% of the cost, so when you have to inspect it for two seasons with construction inspection, it's not, it's tired out, and that's what this is for today. I mean, 400 and, how many is that, $430,000 approximately for inspection?
And this is all based on justified days, so there's no recovery from the contractor?
No.
Other than that, there is also no more money going to the contractor, though, for correcting the 75 or 80 corrections?
That's correct. Yeah, and on that punch list, Mike mentioned it, some of those, that area is very flat, and there's some of the things, they were just plain not able to make drain very well. That's all they were doing.
Because geography wasn't there.
That's correct.
It's not there. Yeah. Okay.
Is this the trade-off we have to deal with when we deal with KDOT?
I don't want to make them the scapegoat totally here, but Jason has hit the nail on the head. I mean, John, they just are function, and you know, sidewalk ramps, sidewalk, they just don't build a lot of that. And so from the city, we have to really, I mean, they're very educated now, based on North Ohio and this job, about sidewalks and slopes and drainage, and they care a lot more than they used to. I can't say it's perfect, but they care more than they used to before these jobs.
But yeah, but to answer your question directly, to a degree, yes, I think it is. Again, we're just going to have to weigh, whenever we look for KDOT money, what that relationship is based on that funding, and whether we think that's acceptable. And if we have a choice to do it differently, not involve them in the administration of it, I think it probably is to our advantage if we want a higher standard of the finish work than what we've typically seen, just because that's just not their thing, and you know, from their perspective, that's just not their purpose. It's just functionality. So our purpose is functionality, but we want it to also, we want to have the craftsmanship to be what it should be visually and from the other perspective. So yeah, we really need to take a close look at each of those projects.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Dan. Any public comment? Bring it back to the Commission.
Well, I guess with a certain amount of reluctance, I'll go ahead and move that we approve supplemental agreement number 5.1 for an amount not to exceed $62,891.11 for the North Broadway Corridor, project number 85U2042-01. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the supplemental engineering agreement 5.1 for the North Broadway Corridor project in the amount of $62,891.11. Are those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1. Commissioner Peck voting against.
Item 8.2, first reading ordinance number 0910481, prohibiting smoking in public places and places of employment within the city of Salina.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In May of 2002, the city of Salina approved the first ordinance in Kansas that restricted smoking in public places. It was specifically limited to restaurants and had certain exceptions. Since that time, over the last few years, there have been at least 26 Kansas communities and two counties and many other cities throughout the country that have put in place a much broader clean indoor air type ordinance. Some examples of Kansas cities that have done that include Garden City in Heston, Lawrence Leeward, Lenoxa, Manhattan, Newton, and Wichita. We've attached a matrix that... Lenoxa, Manhattan, Newton, and Wichita. We've attached a matrix that lists all the communities that we're aware of. That matrix includes both the, what's included in their definition, basically, of clean indoor air, and also some exceptions that they've made. In early 2008, the Salina Area Tobacco Use Prevention Coalition provided some information to the city with regards to the health impacts of secondhand smoke, and asked the city to consider a broader-reaching, community-wide clean indoor air ordinance, very similar to some of the other communities that were just mentioned. This was later discussed and incorporated just recently as part of their strategic planning for this year. The purpose of these ordinances is basically to promote public health. That's the primary purpose, by decreasing citizens' exposure to secondhand smoke and to create a smoke-free environment for workers. So it's kind of twofold. In the last few years, there have been numerous studies related to secondhand smoke, and I think there's agreement in the medical community and the health community that the studies do agree in that the secondhand smoke is harmful and creates health impacts, including premature death. Some of the basic provisions of our ordinance, and again, we pulled from a lot of the various other ordinances, but the basic provisions of what's been proposed today for your initial consideration, the ordinance prohibits smoking in nearly all enclosed public places. The primary exception would be personal residences. Otherwise, it's very encompassing. Some other basic applications that some might not recognize would be that these areas include all common spaces and buildings, including lobby's hallways and break rooms. Doesn't accept those. All city-owned buildings and vehicles. All buildings of other political subdivisions when meetings are occurring. That's related to the public aspect, but when you look at the employment aspect, it really brings those areas in. Public transportation facilities, including the vehicles, such as taxis and buses. All restaurants, bars, bingo parlors, bowling alleys. Some of the places that you might expect to be accepted have not been noted as an exception as of yet. Private clubs and fraternal organizations, again, when used as a public place, but when employment's involved, it really takes you into those areas. Some other ordinance provisions include, smoking is not allowed as proposed within 20 feet outside of building's main entrance. That's a pretty common provision. The other cities range from about 10 to 50 feet. We thought probably 10 feet's a little too close to have an effect, and 50 feet gets you way out there, so we went with 20, but certainly that's for your consideration. It is allowed in outdoor eating areas. The outdoor area is not fully enclosed and not considered part of the indoor, and would be allowed out there even if there is an access to the primary building from there. The building proprietors have responsibility to restrict smoking and are expected to have prescribed signage, properly communicate the requirement to their employees, and are expected to remove ashtrays and related paraphernalia. Again, we mentioned exceptions and alternatives. We didn't include those in there as of yet because we felt that was something that if you wanted to do, you really needed to talk about. Some examples of exceptions that some other communities have made include bars, gaming facilities, retail tobacco stores, private clubs. Some look at a percentage of hotel rooms, bowling alleys, bingo parlors. Certainly, there are others listed. Basically, we didn't want to presume anything on your behalf. With regards to enforcement, the, again, the smoker and the building proprietor are both responsible and can both be charged, depending on the situation. The enforcement responsibility would by default fall to the police department as it does with the current ordinance. The proposed fines for violation as proposed would include a minimum of $50 for the first violation, a minimum of $100 for second violation, and no less than $200 for subsequent violations. Those would all be looked within a current 12-month calendar period, or 12-month period, starting with the first violation. The effective enforcement date has been set out about, actually, 90 days after the date of the adoption of the action, if it's your choice to adopt it. We wanted to make sure to provide time to inform the public of the change, provide educational materials, answer questions, and allow them to make any changes in their building that they need to make. Kind of the timeline we looked at for policy consideration is pretty tight, actually. We obviously have first reading of the ordinance today. We've proposed, with your acceptance, two public forums. One would be scheduled for January 15th at 6:30 right here. The other would be January 20th at 6:30 right here. They both would serve the same purpose. It's just to provide two alternatives. The final action would be second reading of the ordinance, what would be final reading on January 26th. There's a reason for that being a pretty tight timeframe. What it does is, it's intended to work backwards from the upcoming April general election. So if you approve the ordinance, then you may have those that may want to exercise or legis, or legal rights to protest that through a referendum process. If you choose not to approve it, there may be those that may want to use that initiative process to go out and actually get signatures and put it on the ballot. Either way, we felt it made sense to try to shoot for the April general election timeframe. Otherwise, you're going to have a special election if you go further out than that. And that's another reason for the public forums in between the first reading and second readings. It provides for the actual ordinance as proposed and with whatever you might decide to approve or not approve on first reading to be out there so that, and again, if you do approve it with any changes, those are out in front of the public, and the public can then have that opportunity on two different dates to formally come in and respond. It'll also give us a chance to, again, talk to the public and go over the provisions and answer questions. So we feel it's important to have those in if this moves forward. Legally, and I don't want to take away from anything Greg might have to say, but most everyone in the room is aware that the city of Lawrence has an ordinance that's fairly similar to what we're proposing. And it wasn't too long ago that that was reviewed by the state Supreme Court, and they did find that their ordinance was certainly within the authority of a municipality, and in fact, went as far as to say they could go further if they wanted to. So this has been prepared with that in mind and with other similar ordinances in mind, and we're pretty comfortable that, from a legal perspective, that it fits within the window that it needs to. From the fiscal perspective, there's really no funding required for this action at this time. Certainly, if the action's approved, we'll be working on some public education and enforcement. So there could be some funding needed in the future, but quite honestly, I'm not sure that we look at that as a significant funding, so it's not as if we'll put a large number here. I don't know that that will be the case. Really, we have only three actions. One would be to approve the ordinance on first reading as it's proposed. Obviously, a second would be to talk about and discuss any possible amendments and choose to approve that if you'd like. And a second would be not to approve it. On the not to approve it side, you may, you may choose if you disagree with it, that you disagree with the health premise. Maybe it's the issue of weighing the health impacts with the, you know, the rights of someone who owns a building and a business to make their decisions. Both of those are fine and understandable. We didn't put a lot of emphasis in here as far as copies of reports of health studies. We know you have some of that already, and again, we kind of consider that a foregone conclusion at this point in time. Another may be that you think it's a good idea to do this, that you think it'd be good for the community, would improve the health of the community, but, you know, there's two ways to go about it. One is an action here, and another would be that initiative process where the community really gets out, works hard, pounds the pavement, goes door-to-door, gets signatures, and then brings it up for a vote. So certainly, if you believe that that is the way that you'd rather go, that's an option that's out there and available for you as well, if you choose that you didn't want to go forward with this. I guess the point being is, is that if you don't approve the ordinance, it doesn't necessarily mean you disagree with what it's trying to do. You just may have a different perspective of the process. So with that, the city's legal counsel, Greg, Bing, and I will try to answer any questions that you might have. Questions of staff?
The one thing that kind of jumped out at me on this matrix is under the hotels in Salina where it says no restriction, does that mean each hotel is allowed to determine how many rooms are smoking or non-smoking?
Right.
In Salina? So they don't have a set percentage? So they could be all non-smoking, or they could say 10% of our room allotment is going to be designated as smoking rooms?
Today, that's correct.
As of today.
Right, yeah. If you approve this, then they wouldn't have that choice as it's written.
The other thing that was brought to my attention through numerous phone calls and emails, if this ban is approved, I had someone ask me, what if, not that they're making more work for the city, but what if there was a way to have a permit issued to where you could have a permit to allow smoking in your building?
I mean, you certainly have the ability to do that. What would probably happen if you thought that it would, that it makes sense to have a smoking area, the permit would probably be related to the physical separation and ventilation systems in place. And actually, we have some language we could put into this if that's the direction that you would choose to go, because it would, it would make sense that, you know, one smoking room wouldn't impact the rest of the building. So if you wanted to, that's probably more so what the permit would relate to.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Jason, you've been to my office. It's me, myself and I sitting in there. I get maybe one uninvited visitor a month.
Prison company.
Yeah, probably cut me excluded. If I'm in an incredibly celebratory mood and decide to have a cigar, under this ordinance, I can be arrested. Is that correct?
Under this ordinance, you could be cited and fined for that. And the way it is written, that is correct?
Aye.
Okay. All three of you.
Other questions of staff?
Okay, the way this is proposed, private clubs and fraternal organizations, when used as a public place, so that's when they have something that members are, you're not required to be a member for some kind of event they put on, so there's not, that's not a real, so it's kind of an exception. The private clubs can be, have smoking normally in their normal operation.
It is, it is from that perspective of the ordinance. What you're saying is, I'm a private club, the members come in, they can kind of do what they want, but if we're going to have a public lunch for a local organization or something, and anyone can come in, and it would have to be non-smoking, the difference is, is the ordinance does go about looking at the non-smoking from both the, where the public would be, and also from the perspective of employees and where employees would be. And that pretty well, I'll defer to the city's attorney, but I think that pretty well gets you in all aspects of even private clubs.
So, but some of the ordinances have actually banned smoking from private clubs, period. It's a private amendment.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's an option we could
Certainly.
Have.
A quick, I guess, comment, as the ordinance currently is written. It does allow for smoking in outdoor patio-type areas. I know, for instance, Commissioner Joke and I have differing opinions on this. I, my own opinion on that is, is, number one, I can certainly enjoy a nice spring day and sit out there, and still have smoke blown in my face if it's not windy, or even if it is windy. And I'm just wondering, from a business standpoint, I don't have a, I guess, in my opinion, if it's banned on outdoor patios as well, that makes a level playing field for every bar owner in Salina. So we don't have one bar owner who will say, I'm going to lose business. I don't have any room for a patio. I'm going to lose business because my clientele can go down the street to the Paramount, who does have room for a patio, and they can, they can take their business there. But I don't have any, I guess, it creates a level playing field for all business owners with that exclusion. That being said, I certainly won't give up on the rest of this ordinance because of that inclusion, but just a comment on that.
I think that's a good point. If you have a restaurant or a bar, it'd be easy to presume that if smoking, if you believe that smoking really makes a difference in the business that you have, and by not restricting it in the outdoor eating area, that you would have, you could easily look at that and say that there may be a competitive advantage there. There's a couple ways of dealing with that, if in fact, the commission wants to go the other way and restrict that. It'd be probably difficult to restrict the definition because it's clearly not indoor unless you really change that definition. I think typically what could happen is that if you looked at that access from the building out to the outdoor eating area, you could, you could write it in a way in which if you wanted to restrict it out there, you could probably do it by virtue of the distance from that access. So there are ways to really go either way. It's just, again, that's one where you might want to discuss it and really figure out exactly where you think you, you agree. We could write it up either way.
Well, again, my biggest concern there is just from a competitive advantage for business owners. It's, just to me, eliminates a lot of grief by saying, you guys all have it equally. But Mike can go either way on that.
Any other questions of staff? May I open it up?
I'm sorry, Mayor, a quick point of clarification I might make, if I may. Daniel Craig, representing the coalition, raised a question before the meeting, and as it turned out, Dean Andrew had also provided me with some guidance, an opinion from Manhattan. They apparently were faced with the question, and it does relate to the draft that you have before you on the reconciliation of the distance away from, excuse me, away from the entrance, the 20-foot prohibition, and how that would interface with
Patio.
Patios, if that entrance happened to be associated with the patio. So this obviously depends upon whether you ultimately want to go with the distance regulation, and it all, also depends on how you want to treat patios. But I would expect, over Manhattan, the opinion was that the 20-foot regulation would take precedence over the exemption of the patio area. If that is your wish, we probably do want to add some language just reconciling those two in whichever way you wish to reconcile them.
So you're saying that the patio, if we have a 20-foot distance from the entrance to the establishment from the patio, that patio better be 30 feet in order to allow them 10 feet of
Right.
Fun place.
Right. Manhattan basically had the combination of circumstances that you have in the draft, and there is a bit of a clash there. The way they reconcile it was with an opinion, and we have the benefit of having seen that issue, and we'll probably want to address it with language as you all prefer.
But that's when it's an entrance. If the, I realize that there's some patios could be at the, at the front of the building. If the patio is behind the establishment, not at the entrance.
That's correct. The current language, as you probably noted, refers to the main entrance
Correct.
On the 20-foot limitation.
Are there any other questions of staff?
Getting back to Commissioner Purney's question, I'm going to go, if we prohibit smoking in all places, indoor places of employment, and then you have a private club that has an employee who's not a member of the group, therefore, you can't smoke, you wouldn't be able to smoke in that venue?
Yeah, when you look at the provision that deals with employment, there's, I can't think right now of any place in any building where some employee would not end up going, whether it be a custodial employee, a maintenance employee, food service employee. So the employment aspect with the private clubs really ends up including the whole, the whole building and the, the way it's written under the smoking ordinance. So you'd have to modify that to a degree if you wanted to exclude the private clubs, or exclude the non-public event areas, to say it that way, of the private clubs.
Other questions? I'll go ahead and open this up for a public comment at this time. I would ask, there are a number of people here, to keep your comments brief, to the point, and please don't be repetitive with other people. And those that wish to comment, please step to the podium and give us your name and address.
Hello, I'm Nancy Reese. I live at 720 Highland. I'm the collection management librarian at the Salina Public Library. I took personal time off to come to be here because I feel strongly about this. I'd like to preface what I say by the fact that I don't smoke. I've never smoked. No one in my family smokes, and no one that I know owns a restaurant or a bar or anything. And obviously, smoking is bad for you. It's not healthy. I understand that. Everyone understands that. But I've done research on this, and the research I've done does not lead me to believe that secondhand smoke poses such a public threat as we've been led to believe. And even if I hadn't looked into it, common sense would lead me to question that, because I'm a baby boomer, and millions of us were raised by parents who smoked. All of their friends smoked. They carried us on their hips smoking. They, you know, they changed our diapers smoking. I mean, it just seems to me, where are the numbers to support the claim that, I mean, at that level, I mean, we're talking of a minimal level in a restaurant occasionally. And we have millions of people that should be, you know, dead or very sick because they spent the first 20 years of their life in a cloud of smoke. And the numbers just aren't there to support that. And I won't, I don't have time to go into, you know, the studies, but the only valid study that I did find that measured the intake of secondhand smoke, people were breathing an apparatus all day long for a certain period of time, and they naparatus all day long for a certain period of time, and they concluded that unless you lived with someone who smoked, that the, a normal person ingested an equivalent of six cigarettes a year in secondhand smoke. And I just don't think that merits an intrusive government action. It seems to me there are a lot more potentially dangerous threats to the public well-being, for instance, alcohol. I feel like my chances of being killed by a drunk driver are greater than dying from the effects of secondhand smoke that I breathed in while I was having a few meals in the non-smoking section of a restaurant. And, you know, there's no disputing when someone is killed by a drunk driver, the cause and effect of that death. I just really believe that business owners should be allowed to make a choice. If they feel strongly about the issue, and some may, then they can make their establishment into a smoke-free environment, and people that want that will patronize them, and people that want to smoke will patronize those who are operating under the existing restrictions. And I feel that those restrictions are strict enough. And I thank you very much, Commission, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Hello, thanks for this opportunity. I'm Yvonne Gibbons, Director of the Salinas County Health Department, and I have a resolution that I would like to read, that was passed by the Salinas County Board of Health in November. Whereas everyone has the right to breathe clean air, whereas secondhand smoke contains more than four thousand chemicals, two hundred and fifty known toxins, and more than fifty carcinogens, whereas secondhand smoke is a known cause of cancer, heart disease, lung disease, respiratory infections and SIDS, among other health problems, and kills fifty-three thousand non-smoking Americans every year, whereas children, the elderly, and individuals with health conditions are especially vulnerable to secondhand smoke environments where smoking is allowed, whereas no worker should have to breathe the poisons in secondhand smoke as a condition of employment, as there is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke, whereas society bears much of the financial burden of secondhand smoke through higher health and life insurance rates, and higher taxes for publicly funded medical care. Be it resolved that, to promote a healthier environment for everyone on this day, November 25th, 2008, Salinas-Salem County Board of Health supports and recommends to the Salinas City Commissioners, the passage of an ordinance that would make all workplaces and public places smoke-free twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Thank you.
Ms. Gibbons, can I ask you a question before you sit down?
Sure.
The lady before you cited some statistics, didn't say where they were from, but said that the only person who has equivalent of six cigarettes a year in secondhand smoke, you're saying fifty-three thousand people here die because of secondhand smoke? What's, what's the real story?
Well, I'm actually gonna defer to Dell Myers and Trent Davis from the Salem County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, if that's okay, they do have that information for you. Thanks.
Hi, my name's James LaShaya, I'm a retired United States Marine. I've spent twenty-three years fighting for freedoms and rights of choice, and the right to do what I want, within regards to safety, and you guys are fixing to try and take that away from these business owners. You've already done it once, and you made an agreement that after nine o'clock, people could go to certain areas and be able to drink, smoke, whatever they wanted to do. Now, I don't smoke, okay? So if I don't wanna go to a restaurant or a bar that has smoking, there are other ones in this town I can go to. I have that choice, right? You guys take that choice away from people. Where does it end? You gonna come to my home and tell me that I can't do this, this, or this in my home? Because that's where you guys are going with all of this. You slowly but surely are trying to erode our rights. Think about it, okay? I realize, not all is like smoking. I asked Mr. Purney there on the phone here a while back, you remember that little conversation?
Mm-hmm.
And I was told, asking why he's doing this, he said, "Because the Smoking Coalition wants it." That is not a valid reason. How about the people that don't want it? You guys, I know those three of you have already made up your minds, and this is just going through the motions, whenever we see you raise your hands and vote, we know last week you made up your mind. I know he made up his mind two weeks ago, because I talked to him. You guys have gotta start taking other people's opinions and rights into consideration, when you decide you wanna impose your will on us. We elected you, we trusted you, and you're turning around, and you're reneging on agreements. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Katie Russell, do you need my address? Is that it? Okay, I just wanted to come up and say that I am a parent, a single parent, I have a five-year-old, and smoking is not in my family, or in my house, but my mother had grown up with a, with her father who smoked daily in the house around her, and she said that it has turned into a social norms kind of thing, where fifteen years ago, you could walk in and you say, "Oh, no smoking section," or, "I want the smoking section." Well, I have some data from, that I've looked up, this is based off of the research of Catherine Hammond, she's the Professor of Environmental Health Sciences with the University of California at Berkeley, this is up-to-date data, and if you're sitting in a non-smoking section of a restaurant for two hours, you will inhale one and a half cigarettes, so I don't believe six cigarettes a year. One and a half cigarettes in two hours at a restaurant. I am a single parent, so if I wanna go to a bar at night, bars are limited around here, if I do go to a bar, same study, for two hours sitting beside, or behind a smoker, I would inhale four cigarettes alone in one evening, for two hours. Should I stay for four hours that evening, I've already surpassed six cigarettes in one year. So I think that also, health issues, my son has had respiratory issues without any smoking in the home, or anything, but should we walk into Walmart, or into Target, or walk up to the mall, and I have to stop and tie a shoe, and someone's sitting there smoking a cigarette, he will begin to wheeze, he'll begin to hyperventilate, and things like that. So, of course, here I do, pull out the inhaler, give him a couple puffs, and he doesn't smoke, he, but, you know, he's still getting it at five years old, so that would be my view on it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon to the Commission, Mayor, and the City Manager. My name is Leslie Bering, I live at 2160 Roach. I am a veteran. When I was in the service, they gave us cigarettes, and I still smoke. I feel that if they're taking their freedom away from the people that run business, businesses, I feel they should have the privilege to run their business the way they want to, and if the people don't like the smoke that's in them, there's nobody going to Larry Edman and drag him in. You might have a good quarter horse out there to catch him, but I don't think there's anybody gonna do that. And I just feel that they're trying to take all of our freedom away from us, especially the business people. And I would hope that you guys really think about this. And, and I worked in metals all of my life, so I know a little bit about hazards. In fact, I worked for your granddad many years. That's all I've gotta say. Think about it, think. Like a guy told me one time, he said, "Les, put a bucket on your head, and sit down and take a think." So you guys just sit and take a think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Susan McClure, I live at 1104 North Tenth. I'm a smoker and a bartender. While the Smoking Coalition has a good point that secondhand smoke may hurt people, at the same time, ninety to ninety-five percent of your employees and customers in bars smoke, it's not secondhand smoke. They're going to have firsthand smoke anyway. You're not having a clean air, anything, if you are just stopping people from doing something that's legal. Alls you're doing is infringing on their rights. I've worked in bars in this town for twenty-five years. Almost everybody that works in one, almost everybody that goes in one, smokes. The young lady from, what was, Renee, what was her name? She said that she's a single parent, she likes to go to bars. This town has four non-smoking bars already. There is no reason for the few to impose their will on the rest of us, when they already have choices. Also, something else I would like the Commission to think about, most of the money from cigarettes and alcohol are taxes. If you have non-smoking, and you have smokers that come into a bar, they're going to smoke less, they're going to drink less, because they're going to go outside to smoke a cigarette. You will lose tax revenue. Also, if they're in the bar, and they're not smoking, they're going to smoke less, and you will lose tax revenue. Now, that may be a good thing, according to the Non Smoking Coalition, but if they wanna go out, and they wanna socialize, and they wanna be in a place where they can smoke and drink with other smokers, all you're going to do is cost me, my tips, you're going to cost the lady that owns the bar that I work for income, and you are going to lose tax income. That's something you need to think about, too. I have, now, her point about her son with respiratory problems, and the smoking outside the interests of Walmart and Target and stuff like that, I don't have a problem with you restricting my smoking rights close to a public building that doesn't allow smoking anyway. That's because I realize non-smokers have to go in through there. But please, I only smoke in my house, in my vehicle, outside, and the place I work. Those are the only places I smoke anymore. Don't take my work away from me, too, and my income. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Trent Davis, 2145 Hillside Drive. I'd like to actually address some of the comments that have been made today. As far as tax revenue, our state takes in about two hundred and fifty million dollars in tobacco-related taxes, but it spends a billion dollars a year in tobacco-related illnesses. So we're never gonna pay enough taxes to pay for what we're spending as a state. We have a state budget shortfall, and despite what people will have you believe, tobacco causes illnesses. Now, everyone focuses on lung cancer and deaths, those are the quick expenditures. But when you look at the kids who have runny noses, bronchitis, emphysema, coughs that won't go away, missing days at school, parents missing days at work, that's the real cost of secondhand, secondhand smoke. When you look at kids who have frequent infections, and their parents stop smoking, these kids stop showing up in the emergency room and in the pediatrician's office. Insurance companies are already charging less for employees that don't smoke. If you've ever had a life insurance physical, you already know, the first question they ask is, "Do you smoke?" Right? And if anybody knows anything about life expectancy and illness, it's life insurance companies, they, you know, that's their bread and butter. But the, the, you know, the time for preventive health is here, this issue was much bigger than just Salina, Kansas, and its few bars. As a society, as a state, we're gonna have to look at, you know, where can we get the best bang out of our efforts, and it's preventive health. We're running out of money to pay for reactive healthcare. And the city of Pueblo, Colorado, recently studied its, or tracked its, its heart attack rates from 2002 to 2006, when they, they first enacted their cleaning door ordinance several years back, their rates of heart attack dropped significantly. This is published in, in the MMR, it's a public health document produced by the CDC and the government. Surrounded communities without the ordinance did not show the same drop in heart attacks. And that's just one measure of the effect of a cleaning door ordinance. There are people who will still not believe that secondhand tobacco, let alone firsthand tobacco, is a medical problem. But I can see only two motivations for not wanting to limit, you know, involuntary exposure of someone else to tobacco. Either the person's selling it, and they have a financial loss to consider, or they're addicted themselves, and they're afraid that prohibition may come in one day, and they'll be real nervous and have to go through withdrawal. I think we have a much bigger motivation as far as preventive health, from budgetary standpoints, and health-wise, there are real health problems related to secondhand smoke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tom Muleisen, 2032 Lewis. Now, I think I might need to direct this to Mr. Gage. Now, how did that work, again, with places that sell tobacco and the private clubs?
Currently, the way the ordinance is drafted right now, if you're, if you sell tobacco, you still would be included, there's no exception. If it's a private club, it depends on which way the ordinance you look at, from just the perspective of where the public comes in, there would be, those areas in which the public would gather, the non-private members, where they wouldn't gather, it would not be included. But when you take the employment aspect into, into play, it really, at that point, takes in the whole facility, even if it's from a private club, because any space in the building would be, you'd anticipate, whether it be cleaning personnel, or maintenance personnel, or food service personnel, whomever it might be, there'd be access through the building. So that would really bring the building in. So, what it really means, I guess the quick of it is, is that when you look at the whole ordinance, that those places of private, the private clubs would be included, the buildings would, I think for the most part, fully be included in the ordinance today, as it's written. So they have to change it, need to change that if they didn't, if they wanted to exclude any areas within the private clubs.
Right. And the same way with places that sell tobacco, they wouldn't be able to smoke in that?
Yeah, they're just by default in there, so that it would need to be a specific exception.
Okay. Well, I was kinda sent here by my boss, he's been in business here in Salina for thirty-seven years, on three different locations in Santa Fe, member of the Chamber of Commerce, and part of our business is selling tobacco, and, which is a quite legal product, and part of the way we sell things there, is we let customers sample different things. So, that's gonna hurt his business. We ju, like I say, we just had our thirty-seventh anniversary last summer, and if this goes through, I don't know if he'll have a thirty-eighth. And in this day of economics being what they are, and the way some downtown businesses have been, you know, you're just, you know, kicking, kicking another one down, out the, out the door, so to speak. And as far as the private clubs, the reason private clubs are private clubs, is so they can have a board and membership to decide how they wanna run things. You know, I'm associated with a private club myself, and if the membership wanted to have a non-smoking place, it would happen tomorrow. But most of our members don't want that. And it just kinda irks me that you, you know, go to a private club, and you take its privacy away from them. I mean, nobody joins that doesn't know the rules, they know the rules before they ever join. And I just don't feel that's, that's the right thing to do either. So, like I say, the two places I work are gonna get hurt, if this passes through, and I'd hate to see that. But I appreciate your listening to my comments.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dell Myers, and I live at 2530 Floridasol. I am also a registered nurse and health educator for the Health Department. And just kind of to reiterate, public health, this is a public health issue. It's not a personal rights, it's not a business rights issue, it's strictly a public health issue. We regulate restaurants to ensure that we have safe food to eat, we inspect water wells, we inspect proposed sites for septic tanks, to make sure that the water doesn't get contaminated, and people have safe water to drink. And there are a lot of other examples of things where public health comes in, which would be, like, air pollution and contamination, similar to what we've been dealing with, with the airport area. We're not saying that people can't smoke, we're just saying when it affects the health of other people, that's when it becomes a public health issue. It's kind of like, alcohol is legal, and it's legal to drink, but if you drink and drive, you could be a danger to others, and so, at that point, it's against the law, because it can endanger other people. The scientific evidence very clearly proves that secondhand smoke has a...
The scientific evidence very clearly proves that secondhand smoke has a harmful effect on the health of the public. And keeping the greater good in mind, public health has a responsibility to protect citizens from secondhand smoke, and government also has a responsibility to protect their citizens from hazards of secondhand smoke. Everybody should have the right to breathe clean air, even people who are employees, people with disabilities who maybe can't go into a business because of the secondhand smoke, and everyone's health deserves to be protected. So, thank you guys very much for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Ms. Gibbons said that you might shed some light on the statistical differences that were cited in these studies. There was a person that came up and said that the average person inhales the equivalent of six cigarettes a year in secondhand smoke, and then she said that secondhand smoke kills 53,000 people a year. How do we reconcile those, or who do we believe, or?
Yeah, and I'm not sure exactly what studies were cited, but when you're looking at studies, you need to think about what is the source of the study? Has it been published in a peer-reviewed journal? And who paid for the study? We have clear evidence that smoking does kill over 50,000 people a year, secondhand smoke. We also have clear evidence that during a, like Ms. Russell said, during a time spent in a smoking environment, you're going to inhale, it could be several cigarettes worth of smoke. And the issue with that is not necessarily people who are going to a smoky place here and there, it's the employees and also the people with disabilities that asthma, heart problems, whatever, that can't go in.
So, where did that study that cited the 53,000 come from? Is that something you know off the top of your head?
That's Centers for Disease Control.
Okay.
And Surgeon General's report would be specifically where that's found.
I got a few other questions. I don't know if any one person speaks for Tobacco Coalition, but I'll pick on you for a second since you're at the podium.
Thanks.
Dr. Davis said there's about one billion a year that the state spends in treating tobacco-related illnesses. How much of that money comes from tobacco settlement monies?
About five, well, that's a million dollars. Of the 63 million that we get every year in Kansas, about 1 million goes to tobacco prevention. None goes to treating tobacco-related illnesses at this point.
None?
None of this, of the tobacco settlement dollars.
Ooh.
And that's a decision from the state legislature on how that money is allocated.
Was not the main purpose of the suit?
Yeah.
To offset that?
Yeah, that was the main purpose of the suit. But states were allowed to do as they wished with the funding, and that's what Kansas decided at the time.
So, the other 62 million is?
I'm not sure on the exact amount, but it's 67 million dollars every year that we get in Kansas from the settlement, and that's going to continue.
And 1 million of it's going to these prevention efforts?
1 million goes to prevention.
And the other 62 is going into general fund, or?
Some is general fund, some is for children's health programs, some is for roads, bridges. I mean, they're just all kinds of different areas that it's spread out amongst, but not treating the health of the smokers who really need some assistance when they get sick.
A couple of the questions. Do you know how much the federal government, I figured I'd rely on you instead of looking this one up myself, so you'll forgive me. Do you know how much federal, the amount of federal subsidies given to tobacco farmers?
No, I can't off the top of my head, no, but I can find that out for you. Let me write myself a note, or I'll forget.
And the last question for the moment, I had a, just kind of miscellaneous complaint voiced to me this past week. There's supposedly some sort of a, the way this person told it to me, some sort of an injection you can get to help anti-nicotine cravings that was kind of costly, and this individual felt that some of those tobacco settlement monies ought to be going to provide those for people. I take it they're not, or do you have any knowledge of that?
I don't know about anything about an injection, but there are oral medications that people can use that really have been shown to be pretty effective in treating smoking addiction, as well as all the nicotine replacement therapies, those type of things. And no, none of that money is allocated for that purpose, and that's, again, that's a state legislature decision.
Okay, thank you.
Quick comment I would have. I've been a proponent of this ordinance, and I know some might argue that I've got my mind made up. It's not necessarily the case. And I do try to at least have an understanding of both sides of an issue's argument. And so, I have tried to look up various research articles and papers that have been produced that, that speak to reasons smoking bans don't work or are a violation of individual rights, et cetera. And one thing I would caution us on is getting into a statistical debate over data, because for every article I find that talks about secondhand smoke being in the poorer interest of public health, there is another research paper out there that refutes that. And we can go back and forth and figure out what university takes precedence over another or whose research is better. But I think this whole issue really comes down to essentially a rights issue. A lot of times, we frame it up as a public health issue, and it, to a large degree, I believe, is a public health issue, but at its very basic form, it's also a rights issue between a business owner, which I fully recognize and do have some problem with, and it also comes down to a rights issue for the public, whether or not I can walk into a building and expect not to, A, breathe toxins and poisons, or B, just flat-out stink when I leave. And I have bartended, I've played in many bands and lots of smoky bars, and, and when we get down to the rights issue from a personal property standpoint, it seems to me that we all own our individual vehicles, they're all personal property, and yet the government mandates that we have catalytic converters on there to increase basically the quality of air we breathe. Now, it's my personal property, but I should be able to take my catalytic converter off and increase my fuel mileage and performance, but I can't. And I think public health does take precedence over business rights, and that's my stance on this. And that's not to say further evidence can't sway me, but that's the angle I'm coming from. But again, going forward, I just caution us against going back and forth, you know, whether secondhand smoke is as harmful as they say or not as harmful as they say.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
My name is Denise Ward, 901 Twin Oaks Drive. My husband and I own the Blind Peaks Sports Lounge on Marketplace. I feel that it is an issue as far as a business owner's right. When you come down, everybody argues about the secondhand smoke issue. In a bar, minors are not allowed. Therefore, the people who are walking into a bar are adults that can make their own choice as to whether they want to be around secondhand smoke or not. There are five other bars in Salina now that are completely non-smoking. They have other options that they can choose to go to if they like, if they do not want to be in a smoking atmosphere. So, I just think that the current, the current ordinance that we have in effect has been working. If they want to expand it to where children are present, since they do not have that choice as to whether they get to go in or not, by all means, you can do that, but I really don't think that a business that is geared towards an adult environment should have to be subject to the new ordinance. People who work in a bar, they know, when they come in and apply, they know whether smoking is allowed or not. There's other places they can work, they know. So, it's their choice to work there, and they have that option to protect themselves from the smoke by going and working somewhere else. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for a complete, comprehensive presentation and for good questions. I think most points of clarity have been clarified, except perhaps for one. It sounds like there's some concern in the audience, as well as among the commissioners, that the present proposed ban as it stands would include private clubs. And if there's some consideration being given for some exclusionary amendments or not, just as a point of clarity, other than this commission deciding by January 26, just as a reminder, what is the other option that those proposing a new or complete ban could use besides relying or expecting you, the commissioners, to make that decision? Could we have just, could that just be clarified in a real specific fashion? What's your question again? It was alluded to, and Jason did a good job alluding to it. If, if this body of commissioners chooses not to make a decision, yea or nay, and you don't even want to consider some of the amendments that sound like some of you may be considering for excluding perhaps private clubs, what is the other very viable option that the proponents of a new, complete smoking ban could use, other than expecting the five of you to make this decision, period? If I understand it correctly, they have the ability to go out and start a petition drive, is that right? And with the, with the required number of signatures, certified signatures on the petition, it could be put on the April ballot, is that correct?
That's correct. And they wouldn't be limited simply to the ordinance as proposed this evening. They could make changes, they could make it less stringent, more stringent, they could do a lot of different things, as long as it went through legal review and it was determined that those changes would be upheld later on.
They would need to have their ordinance written to go with the petitions so people knew what they were signing on for, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and that is absolutely the one and only way, other than this commission making the decision, as I understand it. What delay though, when there's a new commission?
Well, there is one other way, but there's no guarantee, and that is whether the state legislature will take the issue up again and whether or not they will approve any legislation that would be applied statewide or, you know, local option, county by county. No one knows, but that's a possible option out there, I suppose.
Oh, and I had one other question, just came to mind. If they're, what's that? If, when it comes to rental properties, do landlords have the right to ban smoking in commercial and/or domestic properties? As it sounds, they, they wouldn't have to ban smoking in commercial properties, that would automatically happen, but I had one landlord say, "Good, now this will give me a chance to not let my renters smoke." I suspect that is not the case, but perhaps it is.
That's not, I don't believe that's the intended way this is drawn up, is that correct, Greg?
It speaks of the ability of, I think specifically, a commercial property owner. I don't know of any prohibition against a residential landlord imposing such a rule. Might be a little difficult to enforce, but I've not looked into that question, but I know of no prohibition against that action, just as a matter of fact.
And that can be done now under today's ordinance.
Right, right. Whether we had an ordinance or not, I don't know of any reason why an owner couldn't attempt to enforce such a regulation in that context.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, my name is Daniel Craig. I'm with the Tobacco Prevention Coalition, and I know one of the concerns that has been brought up as far is the effect like on bars and on the economy. And as far as we know, there's been no independent study that's proven smoke-free laws negatively affect the bar industry. And we have data that shows, they've done research, particularly in states like New York, California, Massachusetts, Oregon, Texas, looking at different communities as far as the revenue from their bars before the ordinance and then looking after the ordinance. And they have found either no impact, or in a lot of cases, there have been a positive impact on their sales and revenue. And some of the things, as far as when you do get information, we've hit on that before, is just to look to make sure that they have done the study for at least a year prior to and a year after, and then look, make sure the study takes into effect what the general economy has been doing, and then that it's based on hard data. So, thanks.
Thank you. Just about to wrap this up. Is there anyone else?
I'm Elizabeth Owens. I am a bartender and a medical assistant. And first of all, I do believe that this is an individual right. It should be up to the bartender, or not the bartenders, but the bar owners, whether or not they do have smoking or non-smoking. We've already ended up with the law that we have right now. We already have the non-smoking bars and the smoking bars. So, you already have your right to choose whether you want to go into a smoking bar or a non-smoking bar. I'm sure people like one bar over another bar, and those people are already going to those bars or those establishments. This isn't just about bars, this is other places also. But I still do believe that it should be up to the individual owner of that establishment. I would like to thank the Saline County Health Department, though, for the free condoms and the AIDS testing. That was absolutely wonderful. I wish they could do that with the smoking, you know, smoking patches and stuff like that, because what they do over there is a wonderful job. I get nervous in public speaking. Anyway, one thing also is, we're Salina, we're not Wichita, we're not Lawrence, we're not Hays, we are Salina. I've grown up in Salina all my life, and I love Salina. I love the people in Salina. I respect smokers and I respect non-smokers. I am a smoker myself, and I have that right to choose. I don't infringe my rights upon anybody else whenever there is places that say, you know, "No smoking." I choose not to go in those bars that have the non-smoking. I don't smoke at home around my children. I quit smoking when I was pregnant with my children, because I wanted to give them their own individual right to choose whether they want to smoke when they're, you know, become of age or not. This, it just comes down to, it's our right. Other people should not have the control over what other people are doing when it comes down to something that is already legal. Cigarettes are legal. Every time somebody buys a pack of cigarettes, it says right on the side, we're all well aware of what it says on the side of a pack of cigarettes or cigars or, you know, what have you. We know what we are doing to ourselves. I don't care, I'm not infringing what I'm doing on anybody else. This is my right to choose, and I choose to smoke, and I choose to keep the law the way it is right now, if at all humanly possible. Hey, sorry, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, there we have it. I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Do you want to make a quick little comment? Don't shoot me, John. There's something that, I believe I didn't catch his name, but I, I think his name was James, the Marine. I don't know if he left. Was it James? Okay. There's something that he said. There's something that he said, and you don't have to come up. There's something that he said, and it's something that Ms. Ward said. She kind of stole my thunder. This is a tough issue, and I feel that I struggle with it even personally. I am a small business owner, I'm also a parent, I'm also a mom. I believe that the places that we need to prohibit smoking are the places where families go with children. I was shocked, if not surprised, that the bowling alley allows smoking. When I used to take my children there when they go to birthday parties or whatnot, I must have been oblivious to people smoking. I don't know if they were. I could smell it, but I figured it was from the evening before. We were there on a Saturday afternoon for a birthday party. When a child cannot make that choice because they are under the legal age, they have to depend on an adult to take them or to, or they go with the adult, such as restaurants, movie theaters, places of entertainment for families. I can choose what bars I'm going to go into and which ones I'm not. They don't allow anyone under the age of 21 or 18, so a child is not going to be there. If I'm going to a private club to attend a party or a wedding reception where there will be smoking, I will have to choose whether I'm taking my child to that wedding reception or not. And then I, too, will have to choose whether I'm going to go or not. So I struggle back and forth with rights, whether it's a rights issue, a public health issue, a personal business owner issue. If the mayor wanted to have a celebratory cigar in his office, I guess he could wait till 5:00 PM when you're close to the public? Or is it still illegal when you're close to the public? I'll have to go do it in your car, John. So I really feel that, I hate to be told what to do. Ask my parents, ask my husband. I hate that we're already told how fast we can go in our car, and it's, yes, I got a speeding ticket here recently. I hate that, you know, they tell us how much taxes to pay, how much automatically comes out of your paycheck every time you get paid. But if we didn't have this type of democracy, we would be running amok. I do not like, something Mr. James said, is that people think we sit up here in our ivory towers waving our wands, deciding, "What I like is what you're going to like. Take it or leave it." We, the people, have the power. And I have always been one that says, when we vote on things, that is the only democratic way I can think of, because then everybody has their say. And I don't like that people think we're up here deciding, "Just because it's good for me, it's going to be good for you. You're going to do it." And I've always struggled with that attitude that I believe a lot of people see us as having up here. So with all that being said, I am right on the fence of this. I think it's great, let's have it in the bars, they can do whatever they want at those bars. But I do have a problem with restaurants, the bowling alley. Of course, we don't have it in the movie theaters or churches or schools or any place like that anymore. And I do have a problem with people telling me whether you can smoke or not in my office when I own it, and it's a private business. Thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you. Again, I'll bring it back to the commission for some sort of motion as to what direction they'd like to go. I believe our options are to approve the ordinance, to approve amendments, or not approve the ordinance. And we also have a fourth option, Jason or Greg. Do we have the ability to direct the, those proponents of it to establish a petition drive initiative, to put it on the April ballot, or do we need to deal with one of these options first?
Well, there are a few things that could happen. You could approve this ordinance in some form, and the members of the public may disagree and may decide that they want to utilize that initiative tool on their own with something more strict and go out and do that. Probably the easiest thing to do, if, well, if this ordinance fails, there's no question they can go out, if they choose to, and try to get the votes, or get the signatures to put it out for a vote and then have the public make a decision as to what they want to do. So certainly if it fails. I think if it passes, that would be extraordinarily confusing thing, and I'd have to defer the result of that to a legal counsel. But I kind of think unless there's significant changes, that this probably, for the most part, it's very similar to other ordinances, that you probably wouldn't see any of that activity. So, I mean, a lot of it just really has to do with where you end up this evening. The question I was going to ask, was asking our legal counsel, is this is an ordinance, it's, you may have, you have talked about various aspects of this, whether it be bars or whether it be tobacco stores, things that have come up. And certainly we left it open, if you want to have exceptions in there, you can put them in there. A lot of it depends on, though, how far you want to go before we start getting into the change in the definition, which is going to take a little more work, rather than just throwing an exception. So quite honestly, from our perspective, it may just depend where you want to go as a whole, as a commission first, and what changes you may want to make, if you want to make any at all. And then from there, wherever the vote goes probably determines what actions out in the public would be taken, either in opposition to it or possibly to do something even more stringent. It's really kind of hard to tell. But the processes are out there for them. You certainly can encourage folks to do that.
So it could get appealed either way.
Yeah, either way, whether you approve something or whether you don't, if there's a strong contingent in the public that wants to go and oppose an approval, or if it doesn't make it, to go out and put this out there with signatures for a vote, there are processes in place for either of those to happen. I'll defer the technical questions relating to the process to Greg.
Just want to ask, that might be helpful. That petition initiative and referendum process is a statute, state statutory process. Mention has been made of the petition component, where a particular form of an ordinance would be proposed, the signatures obtained. The form of that petition is subject to review by the county counselor by statute. He or she has five days to review that comment, so that, obviously, they want the form of the petition to meet the statutory requirements, so folks aren't getting a lot of signatures on a form that doesn't pass statutory muster. The main point I wanted to make was that if a petition is circulated, the signature's obtained and presented, certified, that puts before the commission the question of whether to simply proceed with the adoption of that ordinance. It is only upon your declination to adopt the ordinance as presented that it goes on to a referendum or on a ballot.
So if this passes, it still has room for exceptions, exemptions? All the language hasn't been, and then I realize that we still have some public forums that are coming up for everybody to voice their opinion. So that's what I'm struggling with, is if this passes, what is the, what are we, what are we passing? What's the verbiage?
Well, you're certainly free to consider this draft as presented or with amendments today. That would be the first reading of two required readings. You can certainly address modifications on either first or second reading. To the extent of the magnitude and substance of those amendments on second reading, we may have to look at whether or not you would want to have a even further consideration, just to be sure that the public had an opportunity to respond to whatever amendments might be made on the second reading. But that, that's a gray area that sometimes just has to be addressed, depending on the substance of the second reading changes.
Commissioners, again, the timeline is pretty aggressive, and the reason is because shooting for whichever action could possibly occur to happen in the April election. If that's not an issue to you, and you don't mind a special election occurring in the future on this issue, or the thought that it might, you could take more time, and that's totally your choice. I don't want you to feel like either that you don't have enough time. But as Greg mentioned, I think it's easier for us in crafting this to deal with exceptions early in the process versus at the very end. If all of a sudden we're at second reading and there are numerous changes to the ordinance, we'll have to probably go back and postpone action and bring that back to you in amended form.
I don't want the expense of a special election, though, which is the other side of the coin, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Okay, I will ask, is there a motion?
Yeah, I would just add that since the time of the industrial revolution, we have example after example of individual and employees' health rights taking precedence over business owners' rights. And because of that, and because I believe that the majority of citizens of Salina support this ordinance, I would move that we approve ordinance number 0910481 on first reading as proposed.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second that with a couple comments.
It's been moved and seconded, dial open it to discussion among the commissioners.
I, um, the anti-tobacco, anti-smoking movement in this country's been fueled by tobacco settlement monies. It doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of people advocating for this that aren't being paid to do so. However, that being said, regardless of how we got where we are, the bottom lines that public opinion, although kind of passive on the matter, does support these kind of Addressing a couple other comments that were made here, if this is truly a health issue, I would not support any kind of regulation of outdoor smoking. It's nonsense to be considering regulating smoking on patios, although I understand Mr. Peck's concern about the level playing field. I also would, this kind of issues are so controversial, I encourage public referendum on it. I think that this is something that everybody deserves the opportunity to vote on, since it's so controversial. I also want to offer a limit to the motion. I would like to see a small change to where the area around the entrances that's included is within 10 feet around the entrance. I don't want, I don't want to be potentially getting any problems with outdoor patios and that kind of thing. I'm not sure it needs to be there at all, because I don't think smokers are hiding around the door burning smoke, everybody walks in and out. But I think a 10-foot limit would be inappropriate. So I want to offer that limit to the motion.
Do we need to vote on the amendment?
Yes, Mayor, that would be the.
Second amendment.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the ordinance allowing the distance from the entrances to be reduced to 10 feet. Are those in favor, sitting five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. Passes four to one, with Mayor Venier voting against.
While we're clarifying things, I'd like to make a motion that, let's see, section 30.5-4, which enumerates the public places, comes down to number 15, which is private clubs and fraternal organizations when used as public places, in light of the discussion we've had about those also being places of employment. I'm making a motion that that simply be changed to private clubs and fraternal organization facilities, period.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the ordinance to limit it to private clubs and fraternal organizations, period. Facilities, period. Are those in favor, sitting five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. Motion passes four to one, and Mayor against.
I did want to also comment that in doing this, my purpose is so that we have a perfectly clear proposal for discussion in the next two, and that I am expecting us to go ahead with the two public hearings. In regard to private clubs and fraternal organization facilities, I understand some cities have a provision that you can have an exception in a private club if you set aside a special area and have it separately ventilated. So that would be one thing worth discussing between now and the second reading as a possibility. And I understand in some of these other cities, there are provisions like that that could be applicable to other businesses, where they could provide an indoor, separate ventilated smoking area, and it's not really set out that that's possible in this as it's presently proposed.
Commissioners, just a quick thought on that. Certainly, that's something we can do. We even have some language we could use and update it accordingly. The one thing you need to take into consideration is that when you do that, you're isolating the air intake and circulation completely from the rest of the building, so it's, I could get, try to get some price impacts, but it's a pretty pricey thing to completely isolate a room. It may very well in itself create the prohibition, I don't know. But I can get more information if that's where you'd like to go.
Okay, we'll go back to the original motion, which was to approve ordinance number 0910481. It's been seconded. Are there any other comments by the commission?
I'd like to make a couple comments. First of all, about my cigar smoking. I have a cigar about once every two years, and I spend the next two years regretting it. So it's really not an issue for me. I don't smoke, I don't like smoking, but I like this ordinance even less. I am a believer in property rights. I don't feel comfortable sitting up here as one of five individuals, taking away those rights from the people in the city. If this truly is a health issue, if citizens of Salina truly believe it's a health issue, I would strongly encourage them to use the petition process to get it on the general ballot in April, and tell us that it's that important to them. I don't want to tell them that it's that important to me. We've talked a little bit about competitive advantages and things like that. We do have some establishments that have set up shop in the last couple of years, our non-smoking establishments. Now, by approving this ordinance, we've taken away their competitive advantage. I truly believe in choice. If I don't want to breathe smoke or smell like smoke, I won't run to the place. I think the ordinance we have in place protects the patrons of restaurants and the employees of restaurants. I just am not comfortable with imposing those kinds of restrictions on property owners without hearing from those property owners and the whole community as a whole. So I will not support this ordinance, although fundamentally, I am in agreement that I don't like smoking. So with that, if there are no other comments, are those in favor, sitting five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two, with Mayor Venier against.
Mayor Venier, I move to recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene in this room at 6:20 PM.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn into executive session till 6:20. Do you anticipate any action?
We do not.
Are those in favor, sitting five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we're in executive session.